I will call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, for the City of Hutto to order. First item on the agenda is roll call. Commissioner Boyer?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner Livinggood?
Here.
Commissioner Klein?
Commissioner Lawyer?
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Wertz. Before I go any further, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Lawyer to our commission. Welcome, and I hope you learn a lot.
Thanks.
It's fun. Next item is public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No.
No?
No, we do not.
Okay. Next item is item 4-1. Excuse me. Consideration and possible action on meeting minutes from the regular scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on June 2nd, 2020.
I have a... Do we... Does he call for a motion, or do I ask the question first?
Ask the question.
Okay. The question that I had is under number three, public comment from last month. There was no one that came forward, so do we need to state that? All it says is remarks from visitors, three-minute time limit, but it doesn't state that you asked to see if there was any public comment, and there was none.
Well, typically, I don't think we even... We don't record what the public comments are for the meeting minutes, right, do we?
I think it would be more accurate. I think that's a... We can just change it.
I think we ought to put... I think we ought to put something in there that was...
Just think, I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't think we ever record the individual, just because we don't keep... That's not how usually we do our Robert's Rules of Orders for...
Right. I was just letting her know that even if someone had said something, that wouldn't be captured. It would just still say remarks from public.
But it would have...
But we could say specifically there weren't any.
I believe it would have said there were four people that spoke at public comments.
But then we can... If we're going to do that when they speak, then we should... In... On the flip side, I think we should be just as accurate or transparent with that, that there was nobody here, so that's why we don't...
I think that's a good idea.
I like that.
That way, it's very open and...
So then, do we have to open and close the public comments, or is that...
He does.
I don't think we would, do we?
You always do.
You say at certain time you open them, and then if there's no one speaking, you say, "And at such and such time..."
That's a public hearing.
That's a public hearing.
That's not comments.
Oh, that's not comments?
Right. So for comments, he just says, "Public comments, anybody here?" If nobody's there, then we move on.
Right.
And so for... I think for the minutes, the minute should reflect, "No one spoke," or something similar to reflect.
Exactly.
No public comments were submitted.
Yeah.
We can make that change. Okay. I make him... Is there anything else on the meeting minutes?
I have a question. So on B, I had people bring up to me that when it was brought to City Council, it says, I think, seven gates and zero nays, or something like that. And I just wanted to confirm or deny that was the case.
That was on the council packet, but it was amended that day.
Okay, so it was amended. Okay. As long as it was fixed. I just wanted to make sure it was fixed.
Yeah, the minutes were always correct. It's that we hadn't gotten them to you yet, so the minutes were actually sent out to council with that. Typically, that, I think, was one of the first times we've actually had anybody say nay on a plat, because it's statutorily, and it's the ministerial approval, so that was just a simple typo that was held over from the preliminary plat, because that's usually what we use as the basis of the prior project, that's like, kind of like the parent project. But it had already been corrected. So this is the actual vote.
Okay, but the minutes aren't correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to enter the minutes with the proviso that we update the public comments so that there were none for the previous July 2nd... Or June 2nd meeting. I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Clark. That's a...
Second.
By Commissioner Hudson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six oh. Item 4.2. It is a public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing at 7:05. Is there anybody here to speak?
I have nobody.
Nobody? Okay, I will close the public hearing at 7:05 also. Item 4-2. Consideration of public hearing and possible recommendation on proposed zoning change request for the properties to be known as the Warham and Duggar Track Three Tracks, 3.710 acres, more or less, of land from SF1, Single Family Residential, to B2, General Commercial Zoning District located on the northwest corner of Limerloot and County Road 119. Ashby?
I'm going to do this one. So as you just said, it's the Warham and Duggar Tracks. This is actually part of a much larger development application at the northwest corner of Limerloot and Edg Smith Boulevard, or otherwise County Road 119. You can see on the left side, that's actually the future land use map, so you can see the number of tracks that we're working with on this. Three of them are proposed for rezoning. The other two that are shown on that left map are actually going to be presented to council next week for a voluntary annexation and zoning to comply with what this request is as well. So they will then meet back up when we get to council, so you'll have one larger kind of development application or development area between the two applications. So really, this future land use map shows that it's supposed to be commercial, what they're asking for right now on these three tracks. They're zoned SF1 or just Single Family Residential, and they are looking to get B2 or General Commercial zoning, which complies with the future land use map. But it's also important to point out, and it's in your staff report, that the B2 zoning district has specific requirements, so they don't want to have it stripped out, they want to have a much larger kind of conglomerate of development, and that's what we're going to get out of this one. It's not just those three tracks, it's actually going to be that entire corner if the annexation and the other zoning go through as well. So this complies with both the future land use map and what you're looking at in the UDC, so that staff does recommend approval. Drove by today, the signs are still in place, which was impressive considering the win that we've had, but they're holding strong, and we have not gotten any calls or comments from anybody within the 600-foot boundary. So this is really the first test one after the notification requirements have changed. But on this one, because it is a little bit more undeveloped over there, we didn't get a lot of comments.
So it's the same developer going to be developing each one of those, or something?
Yeah, it's going to be more of it'll... They'll end up having to go through the plotting and the site planning, so I believe it'll just end up being the larger portion will end up being one larger development.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I know there's a house right there right now, because I drive right past it.
The three that they're... I want to say all three that they're changing from SF1 to B2 are actually existing Single Family Residential. Those would end up coming down, but you also see the large for sale sign over there, so...
Right, right.
No way.
And it's also across the street from another commercial building, so it's not like commercials going in and you've got houses looking at it. There's already a commercial building across the street of Limerloot.
There's also going to be a subdivision behind that. All that right there. So my question is this. So we are being asked to approve just two of the lots right now from SF, from Single Family, right, to General, this is...
This would actually be for three of the lot, or three of the...
I'm sorry, for three. One, two, three, okay. I'm a little confused. The other two tracks were not acting in any way, shape, or form at this point, correct?
Correct. It's not part of this, but we did want to show that this meets the UDC requirement of not just having individuals smaller.
Okay, but they will come back to us with the...
Correct. So when the council packet goes out, and it should be out probably Thursday, Friday, you'll see the voluntary annexation and zoning request to B2 as well. So it's the other portion. So it's a three-acre piece on the far west, and then it's that five-acre piece in the middle.
Four eight two and four eight zero, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, it was a little confusing to me there for a minute.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions? Other questions?
This does require a public hearing, that's all.
Here.
We did the public, yeah? Never mind. I didn't have to.
Okay. Threw me off there. Any other questions? Comments? I entertain a motion.
I'll move that we recommend on the proposed zoning change request for the properties to be known as the Warham and Duggar Tracks Three Tracks, 3.710 acres, more or less of land from SF1, Single Family Residential, to B2, General Commercial Zoning District located on the northwest corner of Limerloot and County Road 119.
I have a motion by Commissioner Boyer.
Just to clarify, that was recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a second from Commissioner Livinggood. Any other discussion, questions? Call for... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes six oh. Item 4.3. Consideration and possible recommendation on proposed Brooklyn Section 5 Final Plat, 37.2227 acres or less of land, 125 residential lots located at Brooklyn's Boulevard at County Road 163.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. This is phase five out of six for the Brooklyn subdivision. This phase is 125 residential lots, nine open space landscape lots, 37.227 acres, and it is the lone subdivision in the City of Hutto's own smart code. You can see, here's the actual phasing, the actual plat itself. It is to the eastern end of the subdivision. It connects into the previous phases, so it has adequate connectivity. It does drop down a little bit closer to the floodplain where they have their drainage lot. Staff has reviewed the plat, conforms to the UDC, and so staff recommends that the planning commission provide a favorable recommendation to City Council for the final plats.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
I'm going to address Bethany Creek Drives, kind of towards the bottom there.
Okay, sure.
Okay. So it looks like it empties onto CR 163. If so, CR 163, it will see increased traffic. Now, that's not a city road, that's a county road, but the city will be targeted by citizens to maintain 163. Just wanted to put out, this is another example of why we need to plan and develop an update to the master mobility plan sooner rather than later. Because I'm not sure if that's going to connect or not, but we, as the city, are going to be fielding calls about how 163 is full of potholes and ruts and uneven and everything else.
And typically, Commissioner Hudson, the way that works is, once the city has property within the city's limits on both sides, we'll take over maintenance.
Exactly.
But I understand, you know, where you're coming from and your concern on that. I mean, Brooklyn's Boulevard also dead ends or connects to it as well, and so I think there is, you know, going to be an increase in traffic there.
And to me, this is a great example of why we need quickly to get council or whoever on board with letting us update these plans. Hutto's growing way too fast, and we're already at the city limits right there. We need to get a plan and get these things updated.
Well, I think the City Council has to approve budget money for...
Absolutely.
Us to do the comprehensive plan, and I believe also that we're required by law, and correct me if I'm wrong, aren't we required by law to update that every five years, three years, five years?
Typically, it wouldn't be the mobility plan, but the comprehensive plan is what. We're going to need to end up developing, really just redoing a lot of it. But I think with what you saw when we went through with staff and just the commission was that we tried to update as best as possible, so we did incorporate the mobility plan. So I think those are things, if you're looking at a comprehensive plan holistically, those are things that are all going to be components of that plan. So we'll have those bigger conversations when we go through that exercise of what do we want to look like, what do we want our street sections to look like, what things do we need to change in the UDC to then mimic or mirror what we have been told by the citizens and council is what they're looking for.
Okay.
So my only question is, where exactly... Is this on the back bottom, the south side?
Yeah, it's like southeastern portion of the subdivision.
Okay. So this part, the bottom portion butts up next to the park?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay. So basically, right, they're right up next to the whatever the...
The amphitheater. I think they're a little bit away, because there's, I mean, there's a large, you know, floodplain there, so we couldn't, I mean, we couldn't put the amphitheater in the floodplain. And so they're a little bit further north of that, but, I mean, you can see when you go out there, the subdivision butts up to the amphitheater, so...
All right. My only concern is that area, big rings, you know, it's time to scare you to be building.
Yeah, I mean, they...
Have they raised the... Do they raise the ground level there?
They'll, they'll, if there are any in the floodplain, I think that maybe one or two of those lots touches the floodplain. It's... If that's the case, then they raise up the finished floor of the houses so that they're out of the floodplain. Typically, at least one foot, most due to, just so that they're out of the floodplain. And so that if, typically, if there is flooding, their house is high enough up that they're not affecting it, but they usually do a drainage plan that Sam and his team review and make sure that there aren't going to be drainage problems.
I know, I know.
Even though the house itself is not in the floodplain, if their yard is in the floodplain, they still have to get flood insurance.
Correct.
Correct.
That flood insurance is expensive.
Ashby, it says here, there's going to be nine open space landscap... Landscape lots?
Yeah, those are the green links, and then there's a drainage lot.
Am I missing them on this plat?
So like, ooh, whoops, wrong button, sorry. So, like, right there?
Oh, okay, okay.
So they're the little green link lots, and you see that provide a connectivity, walking trail, that sort of thing.
Okay, so that's not...
It's not a park, per se. They have other pocket parks throughout the subdivision.
Okay, I was just going to ask about that, because I know it came in under the smart code, and that was a requirement that they have pocket parks?
Right, they, and I... Yeah, it's hard for me to see on the screen, but I believe that there's a pocket park in this bottom corner. I think that one's a pocket park for this area.
It just says open space.
Yeah, if it's the open space lot, then it would conform to the regulated plan, and it would be a pocket park for the area.
Okay, okay. I just, it was hard for me to read this and to see where the pocket parks or the parks or the green spot belts were going to be.
So that we can be done with this last smart code?
One more section.
One more section.
But they are getting ready, they're getting close to submitting on that one, too, so...
I thought this was the final one?
This is five out of six.
Oh, five out of six.
Yes, they will be coming back again.
Okay.
But then we can be done.
Then we can be done.
Is there any other questions? No? Okay, if that's the case, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the plat as recommended by the city, by the staff.
I will second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Clark, and a second by Commissioner Hudson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes six oh. Item 4-4. Consideration and possible recommendation on proposed Cross Creek subdivision Phase Three and Four Final Plat, 36.60 acres, more or less of land, 168 residential lots located off of County Road 199.
So this is the last two phases for Cross Creek, Phases Three and Four. Phase Three is right at the front of County Road 199, and then Phase Four is kind of split between the rest of the subdivision. 168 total lots for this, for these two phases, well, 168 residential lots, sorry, 172 total lots. At the top, you can see the phasing breakdown for the entire subdivision. North would be left on the screen, just to orient you a little bit. You can see Phase One and Two are already in, they're under construction, they got houses that are close, if not already CO'd, they got, you know, they're moving over there, they have the bridge in and everything, and so they're trying to knock out these last two phases. And so this is Phase Three, the main entry from the northern end of Cross Creek, matches the preliminary plat, and then this is Phase Four, it's split up a little bit. But staff recommends approval with the condition that plat note 20 is amended to include the specific lot numbers that are in the floodplain, and that request came from the city engineer. And so I believe that their engineer has been made aware of this and is working on revising that to address that comment, and their engineer is actually on the phone as well. And so if you have specific questions for him, he can answer them, or Sam is here, he can answer them. But it was related to the floodplain, so they called out that they were going to get a LOMER, which is a letter of map provision through FEMA for those lots that are in the floodplain. And so our engineering team is just asked that they specify which lots so that it's more clear. And you can see it's, it's, oh, gosh, wrong button again, sorry. It's these lots right here, there's like two right there, and then I think one down. There's like four lots.
One, ten, one, eleven.
And so they're, they're working with FEMA to get a letter of map provision, so they're not in the floodplain anymore. And so that was the only condition that staff recommends on the plat.
I wonder why they don't put a park there? Seventy-nine is the one on the left-hand side.
Ashby, will you...
So usually that means in construction terms that they're doing things to make sure it's high enough to get out of floodplain basically?
Well, they're either, yeah, they're either going to raise the lot up, or they're going to adjust the floodplain so that the highest the flood level would get wouldn't touch that lot.
Will you put back up on the screen the whole plat where it showed all the phases? Thank you.
So Phase Four, the one that they have the floodplain concerns, is right here.
Okay, so this is backing up to 199. That's one where the bridge is going across?
So, yeah, so 199 is up here, and then Carl Stern is where they actually built the bridge already?
Yeah.
Or are you talking about the overpass?
The overpass.
Yeah, the overpass would be further east of this, so there's another development going into the east of this one called Meadows and Cottonwood Creek.
Okay.
And then the overpass would be on the eastern end of that.
But in the overpass is eventually going to go down 199?
There will be a connection, I believe. Is that correct? So, I mean, there will be a connection, but it's not the way 199 comes over, and then it goes down, and it'll hit right at 132.
Probably be an exit, I would think, off of the...
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be an intersection.
Okay.
And question, looking at the Phase Three, that exit onto 199 from the subdivision onto 199, that's going to be the big grand entrance that we were told about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have that one, and then they have the one on Carl Stern, and they're both pretty, I mean, grand, I would say. I mean, they have medians and signage and landscaping, and it looks really nice.
Anybody have any other questions? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we recommend approval of the final plat.
With the provision?
With the provision of...
Floodplain note.
Plat note 20 is amended.
You got it? Okay. I have a motion made by Commissioner Hudson. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second by Commissioner Livinggood. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes six oh. Item 4.5. Consideration and possible recommendation on proposed North Town Commons Lot 7, Block A Final Plat, 1.04 acres, more or less of land, one commercial lot located on Limerloot at FM 1660 North.
All right, so this is the North Town Commons Lot 7, Block A Final Plat.
You did just took out the video.
Yep.
Everybody.
We have no computers.
We did, until you clicked something.
We now have no signal.
Row.
But we do have the big screens.
We can look at this.
I just pressed the forward arrow.
I don't know.
Did you step on the cord?
Oh, there we go. It's back, we're back.
Did you step on the cord?
Don't touch the arrows.
Okay, I'm going to use this guy. All right, so southeast corner of Limer and 1660, you can see the dark lines show, it went out again?
It's back.
It's back.
Technology. So you can see, here's Block A, which is the lot we're looking at tonight, 1.04 acres, has access to both Limer and 1660 via access easements. It's pretty straightforward, commercial plat, staff has reviewed it, doesn't have any comments. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to City Council.
And, surprise, I have a question or a concern. The proposed driveway at the south end there.
Is it right here?
Nope, down. That one. So with the adjacent Durango Farms development, we were told that the property to the southwest could be a hotel, southwest of Block, of Lot Seven, that is.
Right.
Is a proposed driveway going to be engineered to handle the traffic load to the eight lots of Block A and any commercial development to the southwest? Because it looks pretty narrow.
If it...
I wouldn't want to try to swing an 18-wheeler through there.
Well, we have the engineer for the plat here, and we have the city engineer that could probably better answer that than I could.
Awesome.
So either one of y'all want to pick sad. They're asking about the driveway chin at the bottom, the very southern portion on 1660, it says proposed driveway.
On the 1660?
Yes, sir. So like, right here, it says proposed driveway. And so the question was, is that proposed driveway going to provide adequate access for the potential development to the south as well as this lot?
That is not part of the subdivision. I could not answer that, because that is, that is a controversial issue before and even up to today, but it's not...
It is a controversial assess issue there, and the then owner hasn't been resolved with TXDOT, and that's why the portion of that track property is still not on the market or sold at this time, that's why.
Okay, how wide is that driveway going to be?
That is an existing driveway. I need to answer, it's not part of this plat, the subject plat at this time, but I can answer it. That is driveway that's going to serve, right now is serving single cell tower.
Yeah, there's a cell tower.
Yeah, cell phone tower over there that's assessing that right now. And that driveway, in my opinion, if the, if the development can, forgive me, if the development can negotiate with the Rosenberg property owner there and have a common driveway, I think that would be a win-win situation for everybody. But on the same token, we are, we need to negotiate with the TXDOT to make that driveway That's my opinion, you know, I think that would be a good then planning, but you've got to argue with everybody to make sure that, you know, everybody is satisfied there. That's the, that's the, that is beyond the scope of this plat right now, and that's why we've got a situation there, and that's why that corner lot there, Gary Webb, property there, you know, they try to get something there, still not going. I don't know what the status on that.
So access then to Lot Seven is off of Limerloot through that driveway, not through that proposed...
That...
that proposed driveway?
That, that's correct, yes.
They may get extra access, but that's not what it, the only thing we can count on is the joint driveway to the north.
Right. And that joint driveway is going to stop right there, correct? Or is it, or is there, do you know if there's plans to take that further south?
No, that's going to be there, that's, that's, that is the turnaround area, that's a dead, that's a dead end driveway put out there. And it has been built already, it's constructed, if you go to the job site on the right-hand side, which is, uh, Lot Eight, a vehicle, that is the A N, the roller skate guy from California, the driveway is there already.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's existing driveway.
Okay.
Thank you. They're, they're building, this lot is right behind the building, is already there, right?
On the south side?
Not quite.
It's under construction.
So you've got the, the roller skate here.
Mm-hmm.
If, if you've got, uh, Limerloot along the top.
Mm-hmm.
You've got the roller skate on Lot Eight. And then this one is down further, there's nothing in front of it yet.
Okay, okay. That's Lot Six.
Yeah, Lot Six is under construction right now.
Okay, I thought it was right behind that.
You have a roller skate?
Yeah.
You have a roller skate?
No, roller skate wheels.
Oh, they make the wheels for this.
Skateboards, roller skates.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend the council for approval on the proposed Northtown Commons Lot Seven, Block A, final plat, one point zero four acres, more or less of land, one commercial lot located on Limerloot at FM sixteen sixty north.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Boyer. Do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a second by Commissioner Hudson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion passes six oh. Item number five, Development Services Director's Report, uh, five point one, annual report to the City Council.
Okay, so per charter, we are going to do the annual report to City Council, just wanted to give you all a heads up. We will certainly let that information be known and send that to you. We kinda did one at the end of the year, but we're gonna just update it a little bit more, um, and get that, it's mostly just, um, Chairperson Wertz and I going through a lot of it, so we're certainly gonna give it out, but it's really just of what have you done over the last, um, year or so since the last time it was updated. So it's really just a state of how much work has been coming through, obviously they see it a lot. That's amazing.
Twenty-five dollar fine.
So, just wanted to give you guys a heads up, we're certainly gonna let everybody know when that is scheduled for, um, City Council, so if you wanna be there and support, we do still need to make sure that we're not getting a quorum at the meeting, um, but we want you to also get all the credit for all the things that you do for the city and how much you help out just getting these things through and making the decisions and helping us, um, get better at what we do as well. So I wanted to give you that update. And then the next is when we have smaller, um, packets and things to work on, one thing that we used to do, I think how we started it when you had, came on board, is we started to do smaller, just kinda thirty-minute to an hour training sessions, so it's something that Commissioner Wertz had brought, or Chairperson Wertz had brought back up, um, to start doing those again, um, because we know that they're not going to have an in-person conference this year, where I've started to see the emails come through from Texas APA, it'll be virtual, if we can afford it, because we don't have to then have flights and hotels, um, I am likely gonna be asking or seeing if there's any money I can move around in my budget and align items, just to see if I can get everybody access to a virtual, because they do have some really good trainings there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Commissioner Clark, you were able to go with us last year to Waco and then Chairperson Wertz, I know, what, two years ago, I think?
Yeah.
You attended.
Yeah, two years ago.
So, it's a really good learning opportunity, um, and I know certainly right now, everybody's kinda figuring out how we're gonna, um, cycle through with COVID and the rest, but if we do have the opportunity, I know the national conference was way less than what we were expecting, so, because I have continuing education credits, I was able to get the funding for that, but, um, just wanna make sure that we're keeping you in the loop and we're gonna look at some more training. We are looking at potentially bringing in the city attorney to do kind of a legal review on things that we can do and not do as far as plats and annexations and how much the legislation has changed in the last year, um, or even really the last two years or three years or so. So just to kinda give you guys a one-on-one, I really just wanted some feedback, if everybody would be good, we could take a poll later on, do you wanna start earlier, or do we wanna stay later, those types of things. Cause certainly, I don't wanna hold something and then have you not be able to make it as a group and miss out on something that could be some good dialogue. Maybe some of it, we could even just say, you know, ask us all the questions, if you have anything or ideas, email them and then we can do a training session on that as well. But that's the thought going forward, I don't know if you wanted to have a discussion about it, or if there's any thoughts with the group.
Um, question on the annual report, typically we're doing that this time of year so that it's kind of lined up with the retreat. So with there being no retreat this year...
It's still charter required.
Okay.
So that's why, um, yeah, the city secretary, Holly, um, requested it, cause I have to do one with HPC as well.
Okay.
So that's why, it's more so just, we need to make sure that we are sticking to the charter, um, even if it's not a retreat item, it's something that, yeah.
I do have a question. I want your thoughts on, um, I think it would help us if we could somehow arrange a meeting with HPC and with Parks, so we can get their input, um, as far as their visions or something like that. And I think that might help us a little bit also. That way, we'll, we'll kinda know where they are and then we can kinda know where we are and, and try to work things out if, if there's a conflict. Um, I, I really would like for us to be able to sit down with HPC and have a, if you wanna call it a work session, we can call it a work session, but something like that. Um, and it gives everybody a good opportunity to meet everybody's on HPC, cause I only know two people on it myself. But, um, I just, I just think it would help and I think it would bring in some better understanding and, and I think there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Okay.
Uh, and I think it would help clear up things.
And if we could do that with Parks, I think that'd be awesome.
Well, and I, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to do it with Parks too.
Yeah, I do know last fall, I think we had talked about doing a joint board. Um, I thought we were going to do one, obviously now we're, we've gotta try to navigate how many people we can have in a room and the rest of it, but I, I think it'd be great to get everybody in the room and say, here's what we have, and then get the council liaisons together and kinda go through, I mean, we, we certainly, if we have that many boards, we're gonna have to post it, but, I mean, that's details that we can work out, it would be likely a public meeting to hear the dialogue or something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but absolutely, I can bring that up with, um, the city manager and see what we can do right now legally with where we are, um, in the state and what our new orders are. Um, so it may not be the quickest item on there, but we, I'll certainly bring it up. Um, I think that'd be a fantastic idea to see how we all interrelate together and certainly know each other, um, as far as...
Right, but the other thing, I mean, you know, if we can do it, I'm, I'm open to doing it on a Saturday, I don't know how any, how everybody else feels about it, but...
And maybe go back to the board training that they had been looking at doing to get everybody together, um, but I'll certainly internally restart those conversations.
I just, just an idea, y'all, I think, I think it would help all of us a lot. And I also think it would help the public. And, and even if the work session was made public, that people will need to come in.
Yeah, I think because of the amount of board members that would be there, I think we'd have to post it as a public meeting, which is fine.
Right.
Um, maybe we could look at even having the cameras, so if people don't wanna attend, certainly with where we are, depending on the timing, maybe that would make it better, um, for more people to be able to participate as well. I don't know if we've ever actually done a retreat in a room like this where it's on camera, I don't think we've ever had the, I don't think we've ever even thought about it, so...
I don't recall, but...
Yeah, and certainly if it's during the day or something, we wanna be cognizant that, um, everybody else works, it's not just city staff, and so we'll have to take it...
And also that, that will give the, the public the opportunity to actually come in and understand how this process works. It's, you know, it's not just a group of seven people sitting up here making decisions real quick. And, you know, I think, and I think Commissioner Lawyer is a prime example, uh, she really didn't know the process and she got involved and she found out and now she's sitting up here.
You got really involved.
Yeah.
Well, right, she did, but what, and I'm not, I'm not belaboring you or anything for that.
No, no, I have an idea.
But I'm just saying, I believe there's a lot of, of the residents out here that just don't understand the process. Uh, it's not developer comes in and says, I want, and staff and, uh, and P N Z says, okay, and goes to City Council and they say, okay, it's not like that. I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into it, uh, especially on the staff side. And it, it's just, I mean, I'll be honest with you, reading Facebook and everything does not help a lot of times, but you, you can learn a lot. I, I mean, it's amazing how many people just think that's how the process is.
Yeah, and I know that they were talking about maybe revamping HCU, um, cause the participation has been lower, but then again, we've gotten some, uh, really good board members out of that as well, so I think, isn't that where you, is that where you started?
Yep.
Okay, oh, awesome. So I think that might be something we're looking at revamping, but that could also be something, I don't think those were ever in a public setting because of how the buildings used to work.
Right.
I mean, everybody, anybody who was part of HCU could attend, but if that's something that we could start making public of, how does this work, um, certainly, yeah, let's ask the questions and I'll bring it up and see what we can start to get scheduled. And in the meantime, is everybody good if we start bringing just thirty to, um, hour-long, here's what a plat is, kinda go through the basics. We're also looking at giving you guys binders, we have everything online, but sometimes it's nice to have them tabbed out, so you would have a copy of the UDC, you would have a copy of, um, what they have for historic, you would have kind of a larger scale future land use map. We kinda did a little bit of that with the comprehensive plan update, but just wanna get you guys...
I'm, I'm very comfortable with if staying an additional thirty minutes to an hour. I mean, cause look, uh, the meetings, this meeting's technically not over yet and it's only, what, eight? I can't even see the clock from here.
Seven forty-one.
Seven forty.
And we sometimes talk in the parking lot, so...
Right, but I'm, yeah. But I mean, if we only have a two or three agenda item, I mean, my God, look at City Council, they, they've been known to go to four o'clock in the morning and, I mean, you know, if they can go to four o'clock in the morning, we can go to eight or, or nine or nine-thirty. And, and that's my opinion only, okay?
And I would agree with that. We can fit a thirty to sixty minute training on a lighter agenda item.
Right.
Um, and I think that's, that's something that staff and you should probably coordinate, you know, if we're doing a, a Legends or a Star Ranch item, maybe we don't wanna have training after that.
Cause that was definitely, I mean, that was a very short meeting, but we'll give you a heads up, yeah, the agenda looked short, but we had almost three hours of public comments, so certainly being cognizant of your time is...
Exactly, and that's where the experience of having, you know, I'm gonna say seasoned board members comes in, where, hey, you know, this is a Star Ranch item, we could see a lot of, a lot of comment on this one, let's...
Right.
Not schedule.
Right, we can always, we can always table it.
Exactly.
And this training's gonna be left where it's live, where people can watch it while we're...
Yeah, so it'd just be part of the meeting after the, um, a lot of, I think, what we did the last time was we kinda went through some of the slides that we could get from Texas APA on just statutory things, um, a lot of it's just what you would go through if you went to one of the conferences, certainly if we can pair this up and try to get everybody on the digital conference, that would be amazing. Um, but a lot of it's really just, how does this work, your role as a commissioner, just sending you guys some things, um, just to try to keep it transparent and show you, like, this is what we're doing internally and on a staff level, here's what we have, I mean, I would even be good with like a break the planner session of just ask us as many questions and if we don't know, we get you the answer the next time.
Yeah.
Um, but just something of like, well, what's this one, what's that one? Obviously some of that I have to clear through legal, but, I mean, there's gonna be some times that, I mean, we've had the development agreement conversation come up, well, Ashby was able to kinda create almost a story map with GIS, and so now that is now a living, breathing map online to where when we were hearing, you know, we don't, we don't know where all those development agreements are, we have them mapped out and you can actually get copies of them.
Yeah.
So just trying to make sure that everybody knows kinda how it plays out and then maybe we'll even map out, um, we could probably map out development processes and put those online too, so everybody understands when someone comes in, they've had pre-meetings, they've done these things, and that's how they got here, kinda like the old school, what's a bill and things like that, and we're not gonna have fancy graphics or anything, but...
I just like the fact that other people are gonna be able to see it too.
Yeah.
Cause like I, like y'all said, I had no idea what was going on beforehand and I've had to come to meetings to learn this stuff, and if people can sit through the trainings at home and see what we're getting to see, it might help them understand it better.
And just kinda share the information a little bit, I think we sometimes, we forget that it's not just common knowledge and we use a lot of acronyms, so maybe we can just, um, start diving into that a little bit. And I was even thinking, in the meantime, even, there could be some that we just go through the UDC together and say, what doesn't make sense? What have you heard as commissioners that doesn't make sense? What do you want to understand a little bit more? Or why do we do it that way? And then maybe that's where we have the conversation, maybe that's where we start looking at bringing ordinance amendments forward, so...
And, and that's the other thing, there are certain things that we have to do, and if we have a short agenda, let's start working on it, because we don't wanna have it all at the back end where all of a sudden we have to get these items done and get it in council within enough time, and then we're rushed, they're rushed, and, and mistakes remain when you're under a rush like that, so if we can start doing little chunks of everything that we need to do, then when it's due to go to council, we're ready to go.
Absolutely.
As far as hard copy of, you know, UDC, et cetera, I don't want a hard copy, please.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking, it would be a very large binder.
There's no reason to do that, I mean, we can go on...
I want a searchable PDF regardless.
Exactly.
Okay, and we have those online.
Yeah.
Um, but maybe we'll just start sending it out of, here's where you can find a searchable PDF, here's where you can do these, here's where our documents are.
Or even if you were to just, you know, compile, compile it all onto one of the wiki sheets.
I mean, we could certainly do like thumb drags or something if somebody wanted one instead, I just, I saw for HPC, I mean, that's like a five-inch thick binder.
Angel worked on getting it all digitally, so we have it all digital, we can just Dropbox it to you guys or whatever. We don't have Dropbox.
We don't have Dropbox's.
Okay, we can zip it to you guys, we'll get it to you.
We'll create a Dropbox.
I mean, that's not difficult.
But certainly, just to get all the information, I mean, so you know where we're looking, what we're looking at when we come forward with the subdivisions, maybe we go through the subdivision ordinance one time and say, well, why, why this particular, or try to get the city attorney here and, you know, why do we do certain things the way that we do them?
Yeah.
Right, I, I get asked a lot, why is it this way? And my simple answer is usually a lot of it is due to laws.
Right.
Okay, and, and then also it's just the way the city is organized, it's, you know, the, the City Council passes items, it's, you know, it's, the City Council approved it. So don't come and holler, you know, don't wanna sound negative, but don't, don't holler at us and holler at staff, I mean, the City Council is the ones that have the all joint set. And, you know, I, I just think it's just so important that more people out there understand the process.
And it may even be that it was approved by a previous city council and then it comes to us for plot and at that point now your hands are tied because you have legal requirements than for the state.
Yeah, resting rights and the rest of it, so...
And I happen to say, we'll change the law. And I go, well, yeah, we'll just go up, we'll just go up and say, we want the law changed and they're gonna laugh at us.
I mean, sometimes it works, but...
The state of Texas only meets it once every two years anyway, so depending on what it is, you got a long way to wait.
Right.
Well, it's starting back up in January, so if we can get some of these trainings and some of the discussions, maybe we'll have a few more advocates for planning that wanna come to the state Capitol with us when we have to, um, you know, write in.
I, I've been asked, why was this building allowed to do this, but I wanna do this and I'm not allowed to do it? And I just look at them and go, go talk to staff, okay? There's probably nine million reasons why, but I mean, they don't understand that.
Well, it's just, I mean, it's this one sentence in a code that we know about that.
Right.
If somebody else glancing through it may not see how that interrelates. And so maybe that's also looking at the codes and how to make it more easily understood by everybody and not just have all of the professional side talk that we can go on for day and our own jargon. Maybe we make it a little bit more user friendly. And some of the processes, maybe we're doing it because that's the way it's always been done, but it's not tied to something. And maybe we need to look at doing it differently.
And, and it's amazing how many people don't know what a putt is, a mud, a pit.
Or a pit and a putt. I think we did put that online.
You know, they don't, they don't know what they are. You try to explain to them and they're looking at you like, what?
But I, I also think that the joint work session, for lack of a better word, if we can, if we make that public broadcast, whatever, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
I think now in the time of everybody having a social distance, I think it's probably going to have to be something like that. I'll have to check and see if we have a room large enough to actually hold that many people and if it's going to be allowed. But even if we could do it virtually for some to make it safe.
Either that or we, we elect two, two commissioners to go. And, and Parks has two commissioners or two park people or whatever. And then whoever wants to meet with HPC, two other, two other commissioners go. And then they report back.
Well, I don't think they do.
It'd be better to have a, like a virtual meeting where everyone.
Well, I would prefer that too, but if it came down to it.
Well, what, what I was thinking is kind of a hybrid of that is let's have two Parks and two P N Z in the room with the video going. And then everybody else on Parks and everybody else on P N Z can tap in just like the public can.
Well, that's, that's doable too.
And then they can call in, it's not open for public comment, but P N Z and Parks can then call in comments, ideas, et cetera. So we've got a physical representation here that is being livestreamed out. And you can get on that livestream and get on your phone or get on the, the call system and submit. So you're actually participating, meetings just remotely.
Yeah, we can look at options for that and see what.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have, now I think staff is a lot more well-versed in how to hold virtual meetings as well. And I think it's something we're going to have to get better versed in. If we go into a comprehensive plan, we know that we're not going to probably be able to get a hundred, two hundred people in a room safely anymore. Or at least for the foreseeable future. So we're going to have to figure that out anyway.
Yeah, you know.
Did you say on the comp, comp plan?
I really want to. We'll see.
No, I know, but you were saying getting a hundred people? Are you talking about the comp plan?
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, I mean, a lot of times for the open houses for a comp plan, I think you can easily get a hundred, two hundred. I mean, we've got luckily, I think it's a blessing for Hutto that we have a more vocal citizenry. So hopefully, we could get a lot of input at one time and really hear from them what they want.
I'm open to that any, any day, any day. I just want more people to understand the process. And, and I, you know, I just, there's a lot of blame being thrown out there that shouldn't be thrown out there. Because people don't understand the process. That's all I'm going to say about it.
We'll have some bigger ones. And then certainly if there's anything, you all have my emails. So if there's anything, don't respond to everybody on it. Just if you would just send it to maybe me and Ashby. And then we can, or even to Angel, and we can forward it. If you have any questions or what's this or ideas of things, we'll look into it and we'll add those to our list of things that we can, topics we can bring back to you.
Before you call for a joint meeting, I don't know however it changed it, but it used to be we would have like four point three on the top of each page. None of it's gone, so it kind of got hard flipping back to see. So can we add that back to the next packet?
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Yeah.
Because it's just there. It's just like, I'm like, is this four point four? Is it four point five? It doesn't say anywhere.
Okay, yeah.
That is true.
It's kind of hard to follow.
Yeah, you probably all, I know some of you probably got the email. I know I did, but other people on staff didn't. They were trying something different with iCientes. And so a different packet, I think, went out, same packet. It wasn't a different, it was just a different format. Yeah. But the packet does look slightly different, even if it was the same information. I'll check with Holly and see where the item numbers are, because you're right, we did used to have the item number.
We did, and it makes it easier to follow.
Used to have the names of all the commissioners.
So they removed that from the template completely, because it was voted on, I think, from council that they didn't. With a lot of processes changing and people changing, the templates in this new system, it's hard to continually go in. Because if you have meetings that are posted for future, you have to delete all of those and put this back on. So the template is made. So they've left off names of them. And, you know, it's up, the only times that the names are going to be on now are going to be in the minutes.
So I have one thing. I will be starting grad school here in the fall. And it is on Tuesday and Thursdays, so evening. And so that, I think that means that next, that August will be my last meeting for this. I won't, I really have enjoyed my time here. And I plan to come back if, you know, in a year and a half I never finish grad school. It's just, I know it's a minimal, minimal for my time. And I want to, if this was on another night, I would suddenly still be here.
Wait a minute, grad school's going to be demanding?
Well. And I have to go to work all day and then I come home and I get to do that. So I think August will probably be my last meeting, because the end of August I start school, so.
Where are you going?
Texas A and M to, it's a master's in data analytics through the business school.
Oh, okay, cool.
Good, you know, good.
You will be sorely missed.
I hope I can come back and roll right back around.
Yeah, that would be amazing. But certainly, I mean, you've been awesome and involved, so stay involved regardless. And then.
As much as you can.
Tell Tiffany she needs to.
Hey, if there's a, I don't know if there's still a room on zoning board of adjustment, but it meets on Wednesdays and we meet maybe twice a year.
I mean, hey, that actually is not a bad idea. If you still want to be involved, we do have C B A meetings. And they're on Wednesdays.
Okay.
And we usually meet six thirty?
It's, it's at seven, but like, we've had one last January and then we had the one this month, so. And the only reason we have this month is because people didn't show up for quorum the previous month.
But they're very few and far between, because we typically don't see a lot of variants. So you still have options. And then the trainings will always be public if you want to still participate.
Anything else?
I just had a, just a public question. I had somebody ask me if they, there was any way that they could go online to look at, say, a development that's going in someplace and look at, to see what all was approved on it? Like the fencing or whatever else.
I don't think we have that on, we have some of it online actually in our development viewer map. There's a possibility. If they have a specific item in mind, typically they are going to have to do the public information request. And then we can share with them the information that way. But we have a development viewer map, so if they go on the map of the city of Hutto, you can go through and actually click on what's being built right here. And it'll pop up the project number and the rest of it. So they at least get a little bit more information or they can come in and ask staff or.
Yeah, because if they get the project number, they can ask, can I see the plans that were submitted for project number X? And then that way, it's more targeted that we'll get a faster response than having to have back and forth on what they're actually asking for. So if they start with an interactive map, get the information for the site they're looking at. Or they can reach out to me or Ashley and we can help them. Best we can. But I think they don't, if they're looking for specific plans, they probably need to go through the public information request.
Okay, yeah, it's my HOA, is wanting information on that, where it's, they're building at the corner of Uvalde and Chris Kelly, over by the propane field, next door to the water, to the car wash on Chris Kelly.
Can you tell about the Shutter Center, the small church center?
Yeah, it's supposed to be like one building, nine thousand square feet.
Is that the animal hospital?
No, no, that's further, that's further south.
Just south of the car wash?
Yeah, right next door to the car wash.
It's got the propane tank on by the property?
Yes, yes.
It's right under an acre of land. I know that.
Yeah, yeah, my, the HOA is.
You can tell what you do for a living, Tony.
We're having a meeting next week and they're wanting some information on it.
Yeah, we can find out for you.
After we adjourn, if you want to stay back, I just pulled up the interactive map. And if you want to show me which one, I'll go ahead and shoot you an email and give you the link to request the P I A.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Anything else? Nothing? Would that be answered? Meeting ends at seven fifty-nine. Thank y'all. Y'all be careful.